Working hard to make the town a good place to live. Thank you for those who have joined us tonight, and may they hear us make wise decisions, have cordial conversation. Father, speak truth, but speak it, Father, well. Father, help us to just recognize in the midst of all this, we live in a great place. Thank you for blessings of this day. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brad. All right, I'll call the meeting to order. First up is our public comments. So we have a few people signed up here. So we've got a few rules. Three minutes. Come up here and state your name and your address and tell us what you think. So first up is Shannon Smith.
I'm sorry, but it was my understanding that we were on the agenda tonight and wasn't going to have to talk for three, only be limited to three minutes.
You're on the agenda, but it's not a public hearing.
Well, it was supposed to be so that we could discuss the problems that we have on community park. That's what it was supposed to be. The, also, the berm is still down, the lights and the noise are still horrible, they disturb everybody on that end of the street, the vibrations from the pile driver are like this, several houses have already had the ceilings fall in, and homeowners insurance will not pay to fix it because it was not an act of God. It was something from that vibration and they will not pay for it. So it's several thousand dollars to get that fixed. I have a picture that was hanging in my kitchen, and it has shook so much that the picture has slid down in the frame that far. Now, that's what we live with every day, the noise, the lights, and the berm. Plus, we can't get in or out of our street because of traffic blocks, and you cannot see to make a left turn out of here. You take your life in your hands when you go to make a left turn out. You have somebody, if they open up a space and let you in, then you hope that there's, you can, nobody's coming this way, so that you get hit. I've been hit several times. I think about everybody in the neighborhood has about been hit. But something's got to be done. Our neighborhood counts just as much as any neighborhood in Stallings, especially the ones across the street that get their problems taken care of right away. You know, I'm just, I don't know what else I could add. Last time I was here, the same thing. We've got, something has got to be done. We cannot continue to live with that. No division between the berm. I mean, they took the berm down the whole way. Even after they were told to stop, they turned right back the next day and went ahead and tore it down. They got paid, they got access to fine, eleven hundred dollars for two fines. That's nothing to them.
Can I ask a quick question, sir?
The fines should have been significant, not a piddly amount.
Can I, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Like, when we come here, one of the things that we struggle with is that you're coming here for us to provide some type of solution. So I usually like to just ask people straight up, what is it that you would like us to do?
We would like them to put the berm back like it originally was, or put up a sound wall like they have on the interstate, so that we can't see the lights or hear the noise. The concrete supply place starts around two or three o'clock in the morning, bang, 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 bang. The lights are bright, they shine all the time. Down at my end, I have the pile driver at my end, and there's nothing to stop the, this.
Okay.
And it's, and it's just, it's a mess. We can't, it's, we're taking our life in our hands every time we try to get out, and we're living at home in misery.
Again, just kind of propose, just asking, what, what is it that you would like us to do?
I would like y'all to either make them put the berm back where it originally was, or put up a sound barrier like they have on the interstate, the great big tall concrete things that they slide in and stop it, do that the whole length of the place.
Okay.
That would, that would stop some of the noise, most of the noise, and some of the lights. Now, when they get in there beating and banging on the concrete machines, trying to knock the concrete out so they can put more in, I don't know if he'll stop that or not.
Okay. And, and I think, Councilman Ayers, I just, we've got a whole agenda item. We're going to see staff report and deed research and covenants, all that kind of stuff. So we may have some time there to discuss this as well. Yeah, and that's the reason why I was just kind of asking, so we can use that in context with that discussion. Okay.
All right. Anything else? Anybody else have a question? You're welcome to come down to my house anytime you want to, vibrate with me.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next up is Dawn Whitlock.
I'm just here about the same thing.
And state your name and your address, please.
Dawn Whitlock, 401 Short Street, and stat right here in Community Park Drive. I'm here about the same thing. We've asked for help. I would like for, one of the things is for y'all to stop this concrete plant from beating and banging at two and three, four o'clock in the morning. There's no excuse for it. That's one of the things. They've been told and told, and they don't care what y'all say. They're going to do what they want to.
And, and when this happens, do you call the police?
We have.
Okay.
But, I mean, you know.
When's the last time you called the police?
I don't know, because normally they say there's nothing we can do. So we quit calling. I mean, but it's every, it's just about every night. You're welcome to come sit on my deck and listen to it all night long. Starts it, and it's loud. I've replaced every window in my house and I can still hear it. So it's not because I've got old windows. I've replaced the windows, trying to stop it, and it's still doing it. My ceiling, I've repaired most of it already, but it's, the, right now, got a big crack running across in my living room kitchen, and it's from the machine vibrating my house. I'm just, you know, I understand that the zoning allows for it, but you wouldn't want that in your house either, tearing your house up. I mean, you know, your home is supposed to be one of your biggest investments, and it's destroying it because there's a machine over there vibrating our houses apart.
And because of that, is there any pending civil case?
No, we haven't started civil yet. We've been told to, we had to come through the town first to see what y'all could, I did speak to a civil attorney, and I was told to see what the town could do first to fix the ordinance, to fix the problems. So here we are. And then the entrance is very dangerous. Not only that, I'd also like to say, we would like some sort of crosswalk to get over to the sidewalk, because we've already had children in our neighborhood hit by car trying to get to the park. And the police told those parents, well, they weren't in the crosswalk. Well, do you want the children to walk up the street to the crosswalk? Because we don't have a sidewalk on this side, so there's nowhere for them to get but walk in the street to get to the crosswalk. And our neighborhood is starting to revitalize and getting a lot more children in there, and they're trying to get to the park. They have no choice but to, to cross over or walk up the street to y'all's crosswalk that's all the way up here at the town hall, which is more dangerous in my opinion than walking up the str, in the street. So if we could get a crosswalk, it would help a lot for children to be able to get to the park. And something, that intersection is dangerous. I go out of it every morning and get hit by a car every day, because you can't see if you're trying to turn left, they're backed up from the red light, you can't see any traffic headed towards 74, head that way. You can't see it because the cars block them. So if we could get a mirror, something to be able to see oncoming traffic that's coming, so we can turn out of our neighborhoods safely, would be great. And a sign that says, "Don't block the intersection," because those people are so afraid you're going to try to turn right in front of them, they won't let you, they'll totally block the intersection, won't let you out, even if you got your left turn signal on that you're trying to go the other way. So.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Whitlock.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Next up is Frank Hamilton.
Marion Hamilton, 407 Short Street. And we had our ceiling fall also. We were lucky to be outside when it fell, and we were told that it had asbestos, and we'd have to stay away for a couple days till they cleaned it up and repaired it. So we did, and it's, it's fixed back, but I don't, I'd hate to see it happen again. And the walk across the street, I've seen a lot of them go across, and they bring their dog with them, so, you know, either they'll get run over, the dog won, one of them is going to be in trouble, so. That's, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right. Next up is our consent agenda. The approval of the consent agenda, man. Got a motion by Brad to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Second by Stephen. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have it. All right, reports. I don't have anything. Brad?
No, sir.
You got anything? Stephen?
I do have one small thing, just to kind of.
Could y'all speak up a little bit?
Yeah. I do have one small thing, and that is, I'm going to bring a, an agenda item coming up. The, Union County has a program that's sort of like Mills for Wheels. It's not that, not that program, but it is run through the Union County, and it was a topic that came up at Wuma that the county funding for that prod, that program is lacking, and that approximately thirty-seven people in Stallings is on the waiting list for that program. And Union County is going to be coming to us to see if we want to fund some extensions to that program to cover the people that are in Stallings that are on the waiting list. And so, just as an awareness that that is coming up, that we're going to get asked on whether or not we'd like to support that. And that's approximately two thousand dollars a year per person, you know, on a reoccurring cost basis. So, and then we did have, at Wuma, we did have a good meeting with the county manager. It's always, also, one of our former residents, our county commissioner, came out and talked at Wuma and gave us a great bit of presentation, answered a lot of questions for, you know, around the sewer, around all the different taxes and things of that nature in Union County. So it was a good meeting. We had a pretty good turnout, too, probably about twenty-five people, so.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. Laurie, got anything for us tonight? All right. Graham?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Alex, town manager?
Good evening, Mayor. So two things from the staff standpoint. First, we've got our monthly budget line item transfer. It's the intra-department transfers we provide for the purpose of transparency, so submitting that to the board. And also, Mr. Shong, you have an update?
Yeah. Right before you, I provided the timeline for all the upcoming conditional zoning meetings. Please let me know if you can make those subcommittee meetings, if they're subcommittee meetings. And you can find all that information online.
Thank you, sir. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Chief, you got anything for us tonight? All right. Nick, you got anything for us tonight? All righty.
Wait a minute, I thought there was an alien invasion happening.
There is an alien invasion happening across the street next week. We're self-heard.
So you've heard. So the public should not panic. They come in peace.
Yes.
All righty.
Next week, next Saturday, the twenty-sixth.
All righty, agenda approval. I do want to make one change. Let's, let's put, number four is going to take a while, so number five, I'd like to move it to number four and just swap places, since, because number five is not going to take that long. Any other changes?
No, Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the swapping of item number four and item number five.
All right, motion by Brad, second by Graham. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have it. All righty. Y'all are up. How y'all doing tonight, Kevin?
Fine, how you doing? Good to see y'all. Good to see y'all. We need to hook up for a presentation. Is that possible? Just do it through Wi-Fi, or how do we do that real quick? It's on a computer, just, is that hard to do? Okay.
Can you?
Could you email it?
Could you email it?
Yeah, yeah, we can email. Yeah, yeah.
Let me, let me write down my email for you, sir.
Tom, would you keep with Alex, and he's going to email it to him right quick, and then we'll, we'll get that going. So while he's doing that, I want to thank y'all for seeing us tonight, and greetings from your next-door neighbor town. Put my mayor hat on, and so wanted to, to tell you, and I wanted to tell you, first of all, how much we appreciate the, the, your law enforcement, the ladies and gentlemen of the police department, they come in our town a good bit, and we're glad to see them and always welcome. It's just like, kind of having a big dog in the front yard, you know? It, it kind of shuts things down, so we want to tell you how much we appreciate the Stallings and Police Department, and, so.
So what town are you in?
I'm sorry?
What town are you talking about?
Hemby Bridge. Big city of Hemby Bridge. Yes, ma'am. So we'll do this real quick, and. Okay, so I'll get started and change my other hat here. So I'm Kevin Presley from the town of Hemby Bridge. I had been in talks with the mayor on several occasions. We go to church together and talking about the sewer issues we have in Union County. And I introduced him to our decentralized wastewater system. I hold a Class Four wastewater license in this, these decentralized wastewater systems, so they're on-site dispersals. And so, having said that, I was going to come here and make a presentation, but we had the rare opportunity to be joined tonight by Tom Bartlett out of Arkansas, and he's the president of Aquatec Systems, and can explain this system a whole lot better. I know you've got some questions. I know the town has also been looking at, you know, projects they wanted to do with, with the situation we have with Union County and the sewer situation. So I'd like to bring Tom up now and sort of let him give a quick presentation. If you've got any questions, be glad to answer them. Tom?
Will I be operating it, or?
Will y'all operate it, or how will he do? Y'all be doing it from there?
If you want to navigate your website, I can give you the.
You'll do it from there.
You can work for me.
Sure. I'm a little old for these.
And you can take it to the public mission.
Thank you. Well, thanks for joining us tonight. It comes from. You have the rare opportunity, as he said, for me to be here, so we're all pretty excited because I'm so important. Yeah. I'm just, I'll go as quickly as I can. What I wanted to show you, please be patient with me. There we go. It's just a quick little overview of the system. The treatment portion of it is the third tank from the left. I'll show that to you in a minute. If you're using a gravity collection system, which most people are familiar with, the tank on the left actually collects the solids that comes from the homes and the wastewater. The black water then goes into the second tank, which is an equalization tank, and that's pumped into the third tank, which is where the treatment takes place, okay? That tank is right here. This little tank handles twenty-five thousand gallons a day. It's twelve feet long, seven and a half feet wide, eight feet tall. It's a very small footprint for that amount of wastewater. Once it's treated, it takes about two to three hours to go through the treatment plant into the fourth tank. That tank is called a pump tank. That's used to pump into a drain field. If you discharge to a waterway, river, creek, stream, that tank would not be used. It would just gravity flow through a UV system, ultraviolet cleaning system, into the river. So that is, that's a twenty-five thousand gallon per day system. We do anything from three thousand up to about three million gallons a day with our system. We're quoting a one million gallon per day plant right now for a city in North Carolina, one point two for one in Arkansas. We do cities as well as developer, treatment, commercial, industrial, residential stuff.
Just out of curiosity, so we have some, what, what does an average house produce wastewater a day?
State of North Carolina uses seventy-five to ninety gallons per bedroom, so depending on the number of bedrooms, you know, we see probably two-seventy to three-sixty, something like that, is what the state makes us use to figure the amount of wastewater per subdivision or per city. We have a lot of cities that are actually talking to us right now because they either have run out of capacity or don't have a wastewater system. So we're going to be adding systems to what they already have, or putting in brand-new systems for cities that, that want to be able to grow and build, but they don't have a system.
So if we, real quick, averaging three, if we say three hundred gallons per house, that's probably a good, good guesstimate.
Yeah, yeah, probably around there. Yeah.
Thanks, man.
That would be fine. This is what it looks like here. Well, it's supposed to work. Oh, pushing the wrong button. Okay. This is what it looks like being installed. This is that first tank for the solids, second tank for the equalization, third tank for the treatment plant, and then that fourth tank is for the drip field, and the drip field's out here. So that's the complete size of a system for twenty-five thousand gallons per day, which is a very small footprint.
Can you explain that last tank again?
Sure.
What do you mean by drip field? Like a leach field?
Yeah, what, what we do is, the water is very clean when it comes out, so we use a little half-inch pipe that's about eight to twelve inches below the soil, right at the root line of the grass, and we pressurize it out into the soil once it's treated, and the water reuses that a hundred percent right back up into the grass. So it's a very environmentally sensitive product. The water's reused a hundred percent. So it's clean. It's not septic. This isn't a septic-type system. This is a wastewater treatment plant, just like downtown Charlotte, it's just smaller. It treats, it treats wastewater to a very high standard.
So that first tank that collects all the solid, what happens to that?
That gets eliminated probably about every two years. Tanker truck comes in, pumps it out, and brings it to a place where they would dump septic tanks, the same type, maybe to the larger cities or so. There's people that take that and treat it, and they charge for it. So the operator of the plant could either be the city, or it could be another third-party operator or utility, and then they stick the tanks monthly, and they just see where the solids are at. They call a truck in, they evacuate it, and start over. Actually, quite, quite simple.
And that doesn't, you have to have some facility that can take that solid.
They're all over, yeah.
They're all over.
All over the place, yeah.
It's basically like people have the sludge, they call it in the bottom of the septic tank system over so many years. So that stuff gets, when it gets solid, it's, you know, a hardened liquid at the bottom. So then at that point, you have the septic tank pump truck to come out and pump it out, and then they haul it off, you know, so.
Right. These are just some of the current projects that we've done. Example, this is a sixty thousand gallon per day system for a two-hundred-and-seventy home subdivision. That's the complete wastewater treatment plant right there.
But that's, and then it, it's buried, correct?
This, this one isn't, only because it's on rock, so what they're doing is they pour the slab, put it on it, and they're going to mound around it.
They'll mound around it?
Yeah, yeah. We do have other ones that are above ground, which I'll show you, that they are insulated for cold weather, and they, they work just fine. Let me see if I can find you one here.
Show that right there, Tom.
Which one's that?
This one right there. Yeah, that's.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, this one, now this one is an in-ground unit, doesn't have to be insulated. This is ten, it's a small one, it's ten thousand gallons a day. This is an RV park in, out in Utah that we put in. So it's about four feet by ten feet long, very small footprint. And that's because of the technology, the media that we have in the tech, in the system allows for us to have a very small footprint, because the technology, which is way mu, way too much to get into tonight, but we certainly could do it in the future.
I mean, is there a minimum amount of acreage that you need? That, that would depend on the soil load rate. So you, it's, it's a very precise type operation. You go out, check your soil, and you see how much the soil load rate, about like, I'm not trying to minimalize it, but about like you do a septic, having a PERT test on a septic tank. You just go out there and check it, at which we have a slow rate. It's a drip system, and so it's just at a slow rate loading the soil up, and it gives it time to, yeah. And let me just tell you this, too. So basically what you have is this system, it comes in, you know, through two or three different, the tanks and the equalization, and that's on, that's just a technical, you know, thing for settling, and then you have your back here, just like a regular septic tank. When it enters into, I think we've got a couple of pictures here, and I don't know if we're going to be able to get those up tonight because we're not using your computer.
Right.
But when we looked at it, we took a sample of the water in the plant itself. That's the stainless part that you see. Everything else is below ground, buried, you don't see the equalization tanks or anything like that. You, you have the, the lids on top, and you access the top of the plant itself. So basically what you have is a, yeah, show that. This was actually taken at the beginning of the plant.
This is the water that came into the plant, and that's the water down there that came out of the plant.
So basically, it's classified as rainwater when it leaves the plant. And we've had this thing called package plant. This is not a sewer package plant. This is so much more advanced than that.
It's a wastewater treatment plant, just like I said, downtown Charlotte, it's a high-technology wastewater plant, not a package plant.
So when it comes out, it's clear water. It's, it's not, we also, as an added extra, we always put UV lights on our street when it goes through. So just like they would require in a direct discharge into a creek, we do the exact same thing that goes to a, a drain field. And.
You just got to finish it.
Sir?
In the water?
Well, we don't pond the water up, so we only have little drips. I don't believe a fish would probably, I think we just.
There's nitrogen in the water, which would probably kill the fish. There's too much nitrogen.
Sir. Anyway, but.
We can take it out, but we normally don't.
The, and we have a plant in Hemby Bridge, the old type plant. You see the, the big round lagoons that's built out of concrete, and they aerate it through the aeration system that goes up in the air and falls back down. This system here has the air compressors that puts air inside the tank, so the sewage never leaves the tank itself, except on its way out and go through the, the process. So we actually blow air, which is the only moving, only component of the system as far as any kind of mechanically, is the air compressor.
Compressor, yeah.
Blowing air into it.
Yeah.
So we aerate the, the actual, the bat that goes through this thing.
Now, the other question that I had is, when you install one, who's responsible for the maintenance after installation?
It, it is done through a certified on-site wastewater installer and operator, and you have to meet certain criteria for different classes depending on the amount of gallons per day. So we've got on systems where you have to be out there five days a week to go out there and just do a check, but that's all done by the state. So the, the town, the county has no responsibility or liability to it. It's just like you would get a septic tank permit that is granted through, through the county, but a state-granted permit. It's an on-site wastewater.
So, Tom, what am I, excuse me, what am I looking at here? That's the media that goes inside of the treatment plant. Let me show you.
There's thousands of these little cups that those media attach, and the microorganisms in septic tanks attach to those things.
That's the stuff up on the screen. So this, this first one, which is a, a black one in there, has four-hundred-and-forty square meters of surface area for biology to grow, and that's an older technology. This newer technology has four thousand square meters of surface area. That's where the biology grows, and that's what treats the wastewater, never to be replaced, never cleaned. It's a natural process, it stays in there forever. Yep, you don't replace any of those? None of it, none of it. Nope.
Do you know how you have, when rocks purify water, basically? So what this media, it attaches, it looks just like a cake pit that you put inside of a coffee, the machine, and it has slits in the side of it. The organisms that do, does their jobs attach to this media, and they'll, they stay on that media, and it's just like a, a live, working type process, just like a septic tank would be. But those things, just thousands of those things float around and churn around inside it, and that's the process of going through. That's why we can get water as clear as that drinking water coming out the outside with any kind of, of treatment except for the aeration and the media.
Tom, tell us a little bit about your company. How long you been in business?
Twenty-six years. Done this for twenty-six years. We have systems all over the United States. We have this technology for min, I put these in for about twenty years. We have them all over the place. Company that builds these for us has been in business for thirty-five years, and they actually have them all over the world. So, it's a very well-known technology in MBBR, a moving bed biological reactor, very common. Ours is a little different because of the media that we use and the science that's used behind it, but it's a very common technology.
You said you're doing one for, in North Carolina?
I got two in already. I've got a, a big city that we're giving them a price for right now, and tons of developers. I'm here for two and a half weeks, every day, meetings every day.
Well, I'd love to go see one. I don't know if there's one's close by.
One being installed right now in Nash County by Middlesex. It's eighteen thousand five hundred gallons a day for a subdivision.
Kevin, if you can let us know where.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You bet.
If you ever want to go to Arkansas, we can jump up there for a day trip.
If you guys want some really good barbecue, come onto Arkansas. I'll buy you some good barbecue.
Kevin, I'm just, nice to see you again.
Yes, sir, you too.
You keep saying "we," but tell me the "we." You're a licensed sewer something you said earlier, but are y'all working together in this company?
Tom's, Tom, so I'm the installed operator. Tom is the manufacturer, represents the manufacturer.
Yeah, so you're like a licensed installer of this technology. Awesome. How many people do what you do, Tom? Your company, competitors?
Not a lot that do what I do. Some do parts and pieces of it. We provide a complete system from the beginning to the end, and we do that for a reason. Any problems, you point your finger at me. Not everybody pointing at each other. It was their fault. So, we, we provide a complete decentralized wastewater system, is what it's called.
Thanks, thanks for being here.
You bet.
But you're certified by the state, right, Kevin?
Yes.
So, let's say one of these pumps goes out. My understanding is, is like, this, is there active monitoring on this?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so talk, talk to me just a little bit about the active monitoring piece of it. Like, like that you know that the quality of water coming off the back end is good versus, and the aeration pump didn't shut down. I mean, just a little bit about that.
We have a, there's a couple of different ways of doing it. One's a SCADA system. Very few people put that in. It's extremely expensive. What we do on most of them is to put in a data line, a phone line, that goes to him as an operator. There's a pump down. Lets him know immediately. They go out to the site and they check it. And we recommend that the developers or cities buy a reserve pump or pumps or blowers, whatever, so they're there on site. They change it out within minutes. A blower, the biggest part, takes about an hour and a half to change out.
That would be something that you would do?
Yes, sir.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
And being, being an operator, we're required to visit the site a certain amount of times and log in for the state because the state monitors how many times we come out there. We have a requirement from them. It's required on the permit. And then Union County have, I think, at this point, now, Union County just pulled out of something, and I'll, I'll have to research it. I'll tell them within the last week or two about their approval. I don't know if now they're piggybacking off of the states coming out because of, you know, manpower-type deal, but there was a visit from the county and the state. And so, which, again, you know, very, very little could happen to these things as far as the quality. As long as you got your pumps going. And Tom, the, you know, the one we went out to was eighteen years old, the one we first went to, I believe.
Yeah, it's twenty now, yeah.
And what, you've put, replaced one air compressor in that?
Yeah, we've got, it's got two air compressors. We replaced one five years ago, so at fifteen years it failed, and the other one's still going. We have another reserve sitting and waiting when that goes out.
So, that actually kind of windows into my next question is, I mean, what, what is the longevity of this? As far as, is it a twenty-year system? Is it a thirty-year system? Is it a fifty-year system?
Well, my oldest is twenty years, and it's still wonder, working wonderfully. In fact, let me, let me just show it to you here if I can remember where to find it. I think I've got it. Well, that's the subdivision. There it is right there. That's actually twenty years old, I'm sorry, twenty-one. It was put in in two thousand and four. So, that's twenty-one years old, and that treatment plant meets permit every single month, and it looks almost as good as brand-new. I know the manufacturer that builds for us has systems that have been in for thirty-five years without having to replace them. My system is stainless steel. It's not, it's not regular steel that rusts. This does not rust. It's stainless steel. So, they last a long time.
And then, is there monitoring for the quality of water that comes out the back end?
We take, we take labs every thirty days. The state requires it. If it's a water discharge, the state may require more often, but that's a third-party lab that takes that. So, they don't have, we can do it, but we don't do it. We let a third-party do it, so it's across the board. They know exactly what it is.
Okay, and then the last question I got, Mr. Mayor, is the, the million-dollar question, or probably in this case, the twenty-million-dollar question. Smell.
I was just fixing to tell you, that, that's the, when I paid the visit first with Tom, that's the first plant we went up to, and.
And he didn't believe me till he came out.
I didn't believe him. So, I've, I've been to Arkansas twice, and we also went to, he's got a lot up in Branson, Missouri. And we could be glad to provide you with some guys with some personal photos that we've taken there. And the smell, this is a open top that has no lids on it. It has the walkway. The cat walks, but you can just walk over and see it just churning. And it was, I'm gonna say, almost zero smell. It wasn't a sewer smell, but you could tell it was, it was, it was just, you know, you got it. And it's a quiet hum because your air compressors and all of that is, is everything is down below the surface. And so, they are, they're blowing down there. And the only thing, and now this particular one here, it looks a little bulky. Hey, Tom can tell you the story on this one. That was actually an office or something with a Tom, and then the, the controls is the old manual controls on these things before we had all the digital stuff. So, that looks like an old concrete plant you go into now that's, has the big knobs you turn and things like that. But, but anyway, if you go, we, the plants that will be providing for whatever the need is, will have stainless lids on the top of them. And I think he showed you that one in the beginning there. And so, you'll have stainless lids on the top of them, and absolutely zero smell, zero smell.
It smells like a pond. If it's operated, if it, if it's not operated correctly, it smells terrible, just like any other plant.
That's right.
If it's operated correctly, you have no smell. It's like a pond or a musty pond.
And he's doing a good job because we, everyone we went to, we had no smell to it.
Yeah, we operate them in Arkansas as well, yeah.
What was the height of that, that, three pictures?
This part of it, you don't have to worry about. Let me tell you a story. Tom Bartlett learned a lesson twenty years ago, twenty-one. I sold this into Texas, and I didn't collect the money for it. The developer went out of business and left me with a one-hundred-thousand-gallon-per-day plant, and I had no idea what to do. I sold it up into Arkansas for a very big discount. This is for grit and screening, which we didn't need on this subdivision because it was a different type of collection. This is the control panel room down here. So, this is probably not something you would get. You would get just this part of it, which is, this one's forty-seven feet by eight-foot tall by seven and a half feet wide for one-hundred-thousand gallons a day. The control panels usually go in a smaller room off to the side, and you wouldn't need the grit and screening if we do a low-pressure collection. Totally depends on what you build.
And everything we put is in the ground, so not only would you lose that, the, the side of it, you would lose the railing around the side of it, too.
Yeah.
Because there'd be no need for.
It's also got a stairway, and this, you don't need a stairway.
There, there you go. There's perfect.
Yeah, that's the, right there.
That's what you're looking at. And think about this, you know, back to your, your question. Keep in mind that we already are permitting sewer systems that are raw sewage that is coming out of the house, going into one side of the tank, that is being the microorganisms that are doing their thing. And then it goes over a baffle, the water, the black water at that time, and then going straight to a distribution box and going straight to a drain field. So, you have the black water coming out and going distributed out. This, what we're doing is we're, we're adding this component into the middle of it, which is the plant, that all we're distributing is clean water.
Treating it to a very high standard.
Yeah.
Put it back into the soil, and it's reusable.
You could irrigate with it. I mean, there's, there's reuse. The state allows reuse to put up sprinklers out there. We could, we could irrigate overhead with it.
This particular plant right here does ninety-two thousand four hundred gallons a day. This is phase one of a four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-gallon-per-day system for the city of K Springs. There's five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand lineal-feeted drip irrigation back here on the golf course. They're literally watering their golf course with the retreated wastewater.
And when, when one, if you can smell it, you're saying that something's gone wrong. What typically happens in those situations?
Oh, they've got the aeration wrong, or someone's not coming out and maintaining it. They're very easy to maintain. So, maybe they're not, they're not cleaning the pumps, and the pump went down, or they're just not visiting it enough. There's, a blower's about the only thing. The media's the media. That will act as how they operate it. So, that's not a problem. It would be the blowers down, or maybe a pump in the equalization tank went down or something. But it's usually aeration adjustment.
The last one we two, went to was in Branson, Missouri. How big was that tank for the?
The very last one?
Yeah.
Eighteen thousand five hundred.
So, I was asking Tom where the discharge was, because this is small, this is a very small system there. And I was asking Tom, where's the discharge line? So, we looked, and the discharge line was coming out of the side of a hill on some rock, and this was a big, beautiful lake. And then it trickled through the rock, the drainage did, trickled through the rock, hit the ditch that was beside of the road, went under the road, through a ditch, and finally made its way around to the lake. And so.
But there was no smell?
Zero smell.
Yeah.
And EPA or the health organizations, if they're not concerned about that, and this is brand-new condos that's in the Branson, Missouri area, I couldn't believe it, but, but there was absolutely nothing there.
I don't see that project up here.
Right there on the right.
No, that's Utah. That's Utah, but it looks like that, a little bigger. Any other questions?
Yeah.
I could go on forever, but.
Say, an eighty-room hotel, wanted to come to Stallings, and of course, we don't have sewer for them. How big a plant would they need?
You can talk to Larry.
Yeah, always. It's about ten thousand gallons a day. That's what you're looking at right there.
There you go.
That's it?
That's it, that's it, yep. Ten thousand, that's actually ten thousand gallon-per-day. It's an RV, RV park. If it's residential, like a hotel, be a little smaller because RV park has much stronger influence coming in. But no bigger than that.
How much would that cost them?
How much you got?
For Stallings, zero.
No, this, this one, because it's RV park, boy, that was years ago. You make me go back, probably fifteen. Probably the plant, all of our equipment, drip and everything, probably less than twenty dollars a gallon for all of our equipment. So, it's not, it's not too bad. Very, very cost-effective.
The installer, that's where it gets really expensive.
Watch out for this guy. Watch out for this guy.
Graham, you got a question?
Yeah, where are the tanks made?
The, everything is made in the United States except for that tank. That tank is made in Europe. We've brought them in for twenty years. It's a stainless steel thing.
I guess like it's not made on the site.
Oh, no, no.
Say there is an issue, any, you know, that it's.
Well.
How, how?
It, it can be welded. Of course, it's welded, but in twenty years, I haven't had one be punctured or fail, but I guess that doesn't mean it's not, you know, not possible.
And then if something were.
If what?
If, if something were to happen, like how long would it take?
Well, we would just weld it. It would just be welded, so that wouldn't take long at all.
We'd just pump it down.
Yeah, they'd pump it down, dig down to it, weld it.
Weld it down side.
The, the things that have to be replaced in this is things like the pumps and compressors, and that, they will be on-site. Spares will be on-site, spare parts.
Questions?
Sure.
If something were to happen, people.
Well, because the tech, because the technology, the, even if the biggest part of blower goes down, it's about an hour and a half. So, you don't have to have like another one sitting next door to it. You literally can replace that in an hour and a half. And the water's in the tank anyway. As soon as you put it in, it starts working automatically. They just hook it up to the control panel. It's ready to go.
And keep in mind, most of the time, you have multiple blowers, so you'll still keep one. And there was a, the one we looked at at the golf course, that they actually had the line, so they had the one that went out. This was before Tom actually took it over, but they had one in the actual tank, and then it went out, and they put a compressor above ground and just run it to it. It went down in there. It's this. The, the key to it is, is getting air to the, to the actual diaphragm of the air nozzles that goes in there. That could be above ground, that could be below ground. So, if you had a major capacity or something like that, yeah, show them that pipe. There's, that's the blower pipe.
If you see the black pipe coming out, that's called the muffler. That's where the compressor is, is down. There's one per train there. That's what would need to be replaced, pulled out and replaced.
Yeah.
You've never run into a problem where equipment is unavailable because, like you said, I mean, you've had some that's in place for thirty years. I mean, I know that air conditioning companies have come out and said, oh, we don't have, they don't make that compressor anymore. You're gonna have to have a whole, brand-new air conditioner.
That's why we have people buy the spare parts ahead of time.
And, and just.
I mean, they're still selling them. I, I, that system's been in sixteen years. The other one I showed you is twenty years. I still get the parts for that.
And honestly, that system, don't know where that air is coming from either way. So, again, you could be set up on the outside. So, if you had a situation that you couldn't get a part, you know.
Different compressor.
Place this set of air compressors, you go up here loads of the air compressor and blow it in there. It just.
It just has to be sized correctly.
Yeah, just blow air in there.
Yeah, aeration.
They've actually taken one at the golf course, and before these guys got there, and had one air compressor setting between two of, we call those trains, setting between those two trains that were furnishing air to both of these things. They've just set it there.
Yeah, we sold the equipment sixteen years ago or seventeen years ago. They, the city ran it, and they messed it up. They shut it down and left all the pumps and compressors in it for two years with the water in it. They came back to turn it on. Obviously, it didn't work. So, they bought their own compressor without contacting us for these, and so there's a compressor on site that runs both of these. They have an above-ground compressor.
Above-ground, yeah.
It's just the air calculations, how much air needs to be in the water.
Have y'all met Kevin Parker, RPE, the towns' P E?
Hi. Hey, Kevin.
Hi, Kevin.
Kevin, do you have any questions?
Curious, drip field, like, does that smell like organic material, like, is there some oxygen that outfalls from that?
Yeah, no, the water's so clean, it doesn't smell at all. If it's gonna smell, it will be at the plant, not the wastewater.
Yeah, everything.
And it's just underneath the ground.
Yeah, everything, everything we have is under the ground, everything, except for the top of this plant. And then you'll see some manhole lids, what, about this big around?
Yeah, twenty-four inch or thirty inch.
And just where we can service into the valves and things like that. And I want to, this, this is a, this is a technology that farmers use out west. You know, you see these big old crops that they're putting in five, six at a time, these reels of drip irrigation for miles and miles and miles. It's exactly the same thing. We're just, we're putting, they're, they're irrigating their soil for the crops. We're just putting the wastewater, treated wastewater back into the soil. Same exact, the mirrors, everything's exactly the same. And it's a drip. It's not a, it's not a big pressurized spray. It's a drip that has return lines. Whatever drips, it just keeps in a, in a cycle.
So, when you, it's, a developer buys, whatever the system is called, so they pay you something, and then they pay for maintenance per month? Is that how it works? And the people that ma, the maintenance people are, work for you?
Not for me. If he's gonna maintain it, they actually charge a sewer fee to the homeowner, just like you pay sewer downtown Charlotte. They just charge a sewer fee, and that pays for the whole, all their operation, maintenance, parts, reserve fund, everything. That's a picture of the drip irrigation disposal right there on the right. Kind of gives you an idea. Water comes in that pipe, and then it's pumped to the, up into the grass there. Sure. I'm sorry, you said that already. You don't get another one.
So, is it, is it bacteria or microbes or something that eating waste?
It's the biology on the media that I showed you. It grows different layers of biology, and as that touches the water, it pulls the biology, the stuff out of the water, and it grows within the media. And then after a certain amount of time, it sloughs off. As it goes through the system, it literally cannibalizes itself till it gets to the end. And the only thing that comes out is what's on the permit, you know, ten on BOD, ten on TSS, whatever it may be. That's what comes out the backside of the plant.
So, you're not introducing?
No, we, we have something that we put in the treat, the very first tank that I showed you where the sludge is. We have something called Back-to-Bio. It's, it's a bio prep that we put in about once a week. It's just a powder, and that activates the sludge a little better to cannibalize itself, so it stays, the level stays lower, so you don't have to pump it as often. That's all you do. If you're going for total nitrogen or ammonia or phosphorus, then that's something else that's added to it. A, a, a quagulant or methanol or a.
That would be mostly a direct discharge.
That would, that would be a discharge. That would, that would be a discharge to a stream, not, not for drip irrigation. Drip irrigation is just a natural biological system. Does anybody fisherman here? Does anybody fish? Nope. When I go fishing and I want a glass of water, I'm in the stream. I go over to the rocks that have all the green moss growing on them. Put my glass right there, cause that's where the water's cleanest. Same idea. The water that goes through that moss and that growth is where the cleanest water is. And that does the same thing on this. That's how it cleans it.
Well, Tom and Kevin, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank y'all for giving us opportunity to introduce it to you.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
You've been to Lexington barbecue now, haven't you?
Been to what?
No, he went that far, yeah.
He went there for you?
I've been to what?
He wants a real barbecue.
Lexington barbecue.
I avoid North Carolina barbecue because I've been so spoiled. I'm kidding. I'm joking. I'm joking. I haven't, I've not been there.
They need more than we can present to. We have a whole lot more, but if you have any questions, be glad to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Tom. All righty. Next up is, uh, community park, uh, industrial park first. Max, uh, Kevin or Dennis, who's leading off? Max, you can lead off?
Yeah, hey. Okay, let me find the presentation. Just give me one sec. Okay. Just wanna make sure you guys can hear me. Okay. So hello, council. My, um, I am Mr. Max Shong and the planning director. Just for everybody else that, um, hasn't met me yet. I was tasked at the last meeting on March twenty-fourth to provide information on the community park and industrial, uh, warehouse drive, industrial park. Through efforts with police, code enforcement and engineering, we were able to create a memo, um, to provide, uh, provide findings. Kevin will present, uh, the memo based on the, the road. I'm here to talk about the noise, vibration, lighting, um, and landscaping removal. I won't go into depth, too much more depth on the complaints by the residents, but that's what the background is for the memo, um, for the noise, lighting, landscaping, removal, um, and vibrations. But the thing that dictates most of the limitations that staff has is the statute of limitations, which is NCGES one forty-nine and one fifty-one. In summary, for land use violations, um, enforcement must happen within five years. So what this means is that especially for the buffer, the berm, um, if it was removed more than five years ago and no action was taken within that window, is now considered legally permitted, um, even if it no longer meets current standards. So I just wanna keep, have you keep tha- that in mind. And I've explained that to the residents as well. Um, we've also done a, a significant amount of historical research and zoning findings. Um, staff reviewed a lot of deeds. We provided the deeds in this memo as well. Um, and we also found that the neighborhood community park was built with, between nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-one, and the industrial records show around nineteen seventy-four. We couldn't find any landscaping or berm requirements in these deed records. And I did talk to Union County and they said that they also do not have any outside development records for this industrial park, um, more than what I've already provided in the deeds. They've also provided that, um, this was recorded in nineteen seventy-four, these deeds, before the county adopted zoning regulations in nineteen seventy-eight. So this wouldn't have been dictated by Union County zoning regulations. So this confirms that, um, in some circumstances like a missing berm, it cannot be le- be legally reversed because there was no zoning regulations at the time. I've also compiled, uh, by address for the warehouse drives and businesses. So the two sixteen warehouses, Mid Hill Trucking, that's the one where they removed the berm most recently in February. And they were issued two notices of violations, one for tree removal, which was the eleven hundred dollars, and then the one for the land disturbance. They had an option, uh, under our current ordinance to comply with our current ordinance standards or they have to bring the site back to original conditions. I met with this developer multiple ti- or excuse me, this property owner, uh, multiple times. They opted to just, uh, bring the site into current ordinance conditions, which means they were, um, had to submit a site plan for, to comply with our current ordinance. So they're gonna include twenty-five trees, thirty-four shrubs and a five-foot opaque wooden fence. They have one year to install it. And, um, they also will have to plant during planting season. So they're not currently doing that right now. But that meets our current ordinance standards. Two hundred Warehouse Drive, um, that plant, uh, we had received noise and lighting disturbance violation, or, uh, complaints, excuse me. We had code enforcement look and discuss that, uh, excuse me, observe this property, and talk to the property owners. So the trucks are only occasionally loaded during off hours, according to the property owner. So the code enforcement officer reviewed the lighting setup and is still looking at, um, motion sensor lights. And, um, the noise has also been linked to the standard equipment operation during the day. Police also observed each of these sites and they've determined that they haven't found any concerns during their observations. For three hundred Warehouse Drive, it's the host company. Uh, some of the complaints were overgrown vegetation, berm removal, noise vibrations. The vegetation was voluntarily cleared by the business and no buffer was required per zoning records during the research. Um, so enforcement was not applicable. The resident did complain that the berm was removed approximately over ten years ago and that is outside of our enforcement window for berm removal, um, to replace that. Three oh one and three sixteen Warehouse Drive is ICE. Um, they have the vibration testing. Um, they stated that they do vibration testing two to three times a week for an hour and two, one to two times a week for thirty minutes. We do have a noise ordinance that prohibits operation of machinery from nine PM to seven AM. Uh, so we had police go out to the site during off hours in the middle of the night. They did not foresee any vibration or noise at the, at the moments that they were, uh, under patrol. So we, I would say, police, um, evaluated the site between two AM and five AM. And they had not found, have not found any excessive noise during their patrols, minimal light impacts in this, um, were provided pictures as well in the memo. So this is just information only, but staff, you know, is gonna continue doing ongoing monitoring. We're talking to the property owners, the industrial drive as well, to kind of discuss mitigation. And if council does want staff to do ordinance review, we can make those standards more robust, but there's nothing we can do for the, those current residents right now. We can only do it for the future. So, um, I don't know if police or code enforcement have anything else to add. I don't know. Do you have anything?
Just encourage the, Paul, I'll say when they hear these noises, we were out between two AM and five thirty. There's some trucks with their backups since we've had one complaint.
Any questions for Max?
Can I add to the chief, just to under, make sure people understand that if, if, if y'all don't call the police, we have no evidence.
Well, every time we've ever tried to get anything done, all we're told is it's already done, so it's nothing we can do about it.
Okay.
That's why I have, that's what happened when they took the berm out of my house. I was literally told, don't worry about it, don't worry about it.
My, my email address is on the, on, on the website. Feel free to reach out to me directly.
Kevin, can you come up, you ready to talk about the road?
Is a joke. The lights are much higher than that, much higher. And the noise is much higher.
Kevin?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I'm here to address some of the community concerns that were reiterated tonight about the intersection right here at Stallings Road and Community Park Drive, as well as some of the pedestrian inaccessibility, um, to get over to the park. Um, before I start, I just wanna preface this by saying Stallings Road is NC DOT maintained. So we are at their mercy to work within and around their requirements. And that being said, back in twenty twenty-three, we did look into adding do not block intersection markings and signage at Community Park Drive, along with a few other driveways along Stallings Road here. And ultimately, NC DOT denied that request because they cited the manual uniform traffic control devices, MUTCD for short. And they use that as, not just them, but everybody uses that, City of Charlotte uses that, just when it comes to implementing street signage. It's a guiding document that's, um, pretty much doctrine when it comes to implementing signage and transportation markings. So because this NC DOT classified Community Park Drive as not being within close proximity of a signalized intersection or a railroad crossing, they said that Community Park Drive does not necessitate a do not block intersection signing, signage or, or markings. Now, that, that addresses that signage. I know we've mentioned as well, the, the, the jumbo convex mirror that's out, placed right out here in front of this driveway, on the other side of Stallings Road here. The issue with that is, this one to start is not completely reliable as well. These are not mirrors to pick up fast-moving vehicles to allow you to make a decision on whether it's not a safe turnout. These are meant for slow-moving areas where there's blind corners. For instance, like a parking garage, warehouses, parking lots, not to pick up traffic, to make a decision off it, on if it's safe to make a traffic movement. So that being said, we can certainly add one over there. However, that one over at Community Park Drive, given NC DOT right-of-way constraints and the existing sidewalk that's on the, that runs adjacent to the park, that one would need to be about five feet further than this one, further, uh, reducing the reliability of a, of a jumbo convex mirror put there. And so whereas this one's not reliable and I don't wanna lull anybody into a false sense of security when making a traffic movement, that one would be even more so. And before I do pedestrian accessibility, I can answer any questions regarding traffic and intersection movements.
Go ahead, Brett.
Yeah. I'm gonna ask you a really unfair question. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I understand what you've said. If there were three accidents and a pedestrian struck turning left or walking across the street, again, it's impossible, but it's, what would happen? What, what would we do as a town if we'd had three accidents and a pedestrian struck? We would, we would do what?
NC DOT does look at traffic, uh, excuse me, um, crash rates, whether vehicular or pedestrian traffic. We'd still be at their mercy to implement something to increase the safety and, and visibility of this intersection. But ultimately, we could, I, I don't know what the, the threshold for crash rates is necessarily. I wanna say.
If they were thirty, I guess, I guess I'm asking a hypothetical, but, but, but that's, it's, it's unsatisfying your answer. But I know, I get this and have repeated this ad nauseam about NC DOT, which does great work. I'm not saying they don't. This is a tough spot. I've got a, I've got a issue in my neighborhood that the speed limit should be reduced and I can't quite get it done for safety reasons because there's no accident yet. I need a couple of accidents, I think, sadly. If the town were to maintain Stallings Road between the railroad tracks and sort of this town center area, would that change things?
It, it could. One thing I'd be concerned about doing would, I just, we know how bad traffic is on Stallings Road here now. Presumably, without looking at any of the data, the intersection improvement here coming down the pipeline with the Monroe widening will significantly improve that, that movement. I, don't hold me to that. That's me without.
That's fair.
Looking at any numbers. So I, I do believe that that will help traffic from backing up this far down, down the road.
In other words, the, the state may point to the investment of the infinity loop, whatever we're calling that movement, to relieve traffic, which would make a safer intersection. And how many years is that away? Couple, five?
I believe they're expected to start construction summer of twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the only other thing is, uh, citizens emailed me today and said, uh, that, uh, in the town of Matthews, NC DOT, uh, with a similar intersection, I don't know what intersection it is, we can find out. Uh, they put, uh, recommended a three-way stop. And so I have no idea if that's available on Stallings Road due to the traffic, but if that's something we can approach DOT.
I could certainly ask. One thing I will say is I mentioned that MUTCD, that manual, manual of uniform traffic control devices. And those also dictate when, uh, signalized intersections are warranted and when all-way stops are warranted. And the, the guideline there is that the side street, which would be Community Park Drive, needs a minimum of two hundred vehicles per hour approaching that intersection on average over an eight-hour period. And I, I, I just don't believe that there's that many vehicles, um, to, to meet that threshold for, for NC DOT. I, I'd be more than happy to ask, but if they cited MUTCD for the do not block intersection implementation signage, then I, I, I think that they, that would be their response, I'd expect.
Well, let's check it out.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mayor, if I may, um, I, I think this is something as far as the, the turning goes that, uh, I feel, um, I think we as a town share those concerns as the residents express. When you try to turn left out of here during rush hour or right in some cases, you can't see to the other side. And I think that's reflected both in pedestrian incidents and with vehicular crews, including with one of our police cars. And with that being said, I know, uh, Mr. Parker has tried, uh, along with Chief Franks, to talk to DOT to get them, and done a lot of work on it, frankly. Looked at some various solutions, including some local solutions to don't block the intersection type options that would allow some of that. And it's been denied. So what I might suggest, Mayor, if the board would, um, consider sending a letter, uh, to the DOT engineer and see if we can get some better traction that way to allow Kevin, um, a little bit, not that he doesn't have support, but a little bit more, um, ammunition, for lack of a better term, to go and, and make that request. Would y'all be open to that? Kevin, would you be open to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if you draft it for my signature, we'll be more than glad to.
Okay.
Send something.
We'll do that. We can do that and, and, uh, maybe try to have another meeting. And, uh, Mayor, if, if you're available, I'd love to bring you in too, because we've met with them and haven't gotten anywhere. And having you at one of those.
The DOT?
Yes, sir. With, with Mr. Knite, perhaps.
Oh, is that right?
I just really, I, I've sitting here, I've, I've listened to what they've said. And it, it, it feels like deja vu because we've experienced it. We've tried to address it. The mirror just doesn't work. It's, it's not functional. I've went out after I had their concerns, uh, me and Mr. Dillard went out and we walked it. And it's not helpful. It's meant, as Kevin said, for a low-speed situation. So, but I do think there is a potential opportunity with the, the don't block the box. And we'd like, ask for your support to, to pursue that.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right. What's next?
Yeah, uh, the, the next and, next and last concern was about pedestrian accessibility to cross Stallings Road and access the park. And I, I know we have streetscape plans adopted, but until those get implemented, there really is no immediate solution. And if, Alex, if I, if I recall, the crosswalk that we got here was difficult to implement as well. And so as staff researched this, right behind, worrying myself, right behind the public works garage here, there's, um, access to Shirley Drive, which provides access all throughout Community Park. And we, we believe that we can implement an ADA-accessible pedestrian path from the end of Shirley Drive, connecting to our existing sidewalk that, to access our grounds here and allow them to have safe access to the current crosswalk right out here in front of Stallings, in front of Town Hall. Now, I can't guarantee the cars will stop for you at, at the crosswalk, because they don't stop for me when I try to cross. Um, but at least it's a much safer way to get there. And we would just ask, staff would just ask council approval to, to implement that.
Yeah, could you bring a proposal to us on that?
Sure.
As far as cost and time and?
I, I think we could do that in-house with our public works department and it'd probably cost, probably be three days and maybe a thousand dollars.
Is, is it a law in North Carolina that if a pedestrian is in the, um, walkway, that you, they have to stop?
Once you're, once you've entered into the crosswalk legally, yes, you're required to stop. Question is, who was the first one in? The car or the pedestrian?
They don't stop.
Particularly if you're crossing against the line, which this doesn't, is not applicable because we don't have a cross.
I've done that and they don't stop. But I've done that, and they don't stop. I mean, you could stand there for, and sometimes
Well, that's a good solution there, bringing in that sidewalk. I also appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Sure, absolutely.
Any other questions for Kevin?
On that there, do we need to
Just to confirm, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Oh, man, I was just going to ask, do we need to, is it possible to upgrade that crosswalk to have some type of lighting or something?
I think, I'll talk to NC DOT. I'm not sure what kind of coordination has happened previously on that. Alex, you might be able to speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, no, I think it's something that staff would recommend, upgrading that crosswalk. I know there's been talk about putting in streetscape. And so, you know, we want to make that crosswalk safer, at the same time, we want to be, the community trusts us with its money, we want to be good stewards. And so the concern was, do we want to put in new crossings? And we saw how much over at Blair Mill, that was $100,000 just for the signal. Do we want to spend that if we potentially have to rip that out and not, you know, two years from now? But let, let me, Mr. Parker, together, and we can kind of talk about that when, and talk about with DOT and see what options might be available. Is that, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. And Mayor, just to confirm, you would like us to bring back a proposal with a cost to make that connection? Did I hear that right?
Sure.
Okay, sounds good.
Any questions for Kevin? All right, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, next, well, you're up next here. Next up is this sanitary sewer update.
Kind of good timing for this one, with Kevin One and his team presenting to start off the meeting. But the purpose of this is to really recap and provide an update on our sanitary sewer study that we've been pursuing for about a year and a half at this point. We started that in October 2023. And ultimately, we're at a decision point, decision point to receive some formal guidance from council, have council talk about their priorities as it relates to bringing sewer capacity in certain, in two different areas of town here, one town center and the other area over there near the hospital. And ultimately, just open it up for discussion, just to see what, what y'all want staff to pursue next, if anything. And so I'll, I'll run through these discussion topics pretty quickly, because the key point is the, none of this is really new information, I think. Spoiler alert, I think we're all aware of the situation at hand and that there's no immediate or long-term solutions for public water and sewer to be brought into these areas. So all the updates from, that we provided to council back in February, November of 2024, please stop me if you have any questions, but I'll run through those pretty quickly, because none of it's new information. It's important information, but ultimately, what we met with in December 2024 with Union County and the elected officials is really going to help dictate the final conversation. So February 2024, that was our first update to council, and what we did at that presentation, we presented some projected flows based on small area plans for the town center area as well as the hospital. And that's when we also mentioned that we got the verbal okay from Charlotte Water to connect into their system. And so with that, we presented, again, these flow rates, some connection points to Charlotte Water System, just kind of preliminary engineering, dove into land uses a little bit further, described how we got those projected flows, and these land uses were, again, based on small area plans and developer interest. This is more of a categorized chart version of that, of that previous map for town center area, and again, over there by, by the hospital. And after presenting that information, council decided, staff, please continue on, in more detail, to coordinate with Charlotte Water and Union County, and kind of come back to us and propose some options that, that we think could happen. And so that's exactly what we did, and in November 2024, we presented those findings. And again, I'll, I'll kind of just touch on it, touch on the key points from that. But the key, the key point from coordinating with Charlotte Water was that Charlotte Water also does not have any capacity where we would connect and downstream of where we would connect. All of this feeds into the McAlpine Creek wastewater treatment facility, and they're already experiencing surcharging. So what Charlotte Water told us was that they need to implement a CIP to increase the capacity into this area. And one key component of that CIP is adding another sanitary sewer lateral underneath 485, which is a significant cost to that. Additionally, as a piece of that, staff submitted a preliminary capacity, an application to Charlotte's Preliminary Capacity Assurance Program, their CAP, which basically said, we want you all to consider us while you're developing your CIP. So that's, that's what we did, but unfortunately, since we don't have any finite projects in the pipeline or approved, Charlotte Water told us that we'll continue to coordinate with you, especially as developers come in, which, from the Charlotte side of things, but since we don't have any approved projects, and I say we, I mean Stallings, we can't consider, it's our policy that we cannot consider that as a part of the CIP development. So that's ultimately where we left with Charlotte Water. And one final piece of that is that best-case scenario for Charlotte to develop and implement their CIP, we're looking at six, six years, best-case scenario, realistically 10. So that was more of backing behind, there's really no immediate, quick solution to bring capacity into these areas. And so after that coordination with Charlotte Water, coordinated with Union County, and this was more of kind of running through some options and seeing what challenges would be associated with each of those options. And so we discussed, you know, asset allocation and management. For example, Union County already has infrastructure in the ground, do we reroute their infrastructure? Do we have to install new infrastructure? Who pays for that? Fee rates and fee schedules for us sending, potentially sending flow to Charlotte Water? So a lot of those complications and challenges behind a few options. This, this map helped dictate those conversations, looking at Union County's existing infrastructure. This is a really good breakdown of the watersheds that are, we're having issues with capacity, dark blue being 12-mile, wait, 12-mile watershed, excuse me, and the pink being Crooked Creek And so these are some of those options that we ran through with Union County and some of their challenges, the options, obviously, one being connection to Charlotte Water System. We know that's not going to happen anytime soon, given their capacity limitations, but it still is an option. We could pump the areas in town center, and I'll jump back to this map. Our town center area over here to the left has a decent amount of, of area within the Crooked Creek watershed, so pumping over to the 12-mile creek watershed to alleviate some of the demand from Crooked Creek in this area was an option. And that was considered one of our more feasible options, short-term feasible options, but would still have a significant cost associated with that. And then option three and four, not as feasible, but still options. And the real key behind these options is that these are not the only options, nothing is really off the table, but one, one big piece is that no matter what we do, there's going to be a significant cost associated with it, whether it's just pumping to 12-mile creek, there's going to be a lot of engineering and design work that's needed for that, or directly making connection to Charlotte Water. And after our conversations with Union County, Stallings would most likely be funding that in totality. So it'd be a significant need of, need for funding from, from the town. So that's the caveat of pretty much every option. And so with that information, where we went next was council decided that the next best step would be to talk to Union County elected officials and staff directly, just to really get an understanding of what our, what our long-term options are here. And so we had that meeting in December of 2024 with Union County staff and elected officials, Ms. Melissa Merrill was in attendance to that. And what we, what we talked about was, we summarized the CIP projects that Union County is pursuing currently, and it's really the beginning and the end of the list for the Crooked Creek and 12-mile creek watershed. And what they're doing in Crooked Creek, they have a Crooked Creek interceptor project, which is upsizing and improving pipes, however, that does not increase the capacity for treatment at the plant itself. So it's really just a pipe improvement project, not a capacity improvement project. And then the 12-mile wastewater treatment expansion is increasing the capacity at the treatment facility of 12-mile from seven and a half gallons to nine gallons. But one really important piece of that is that Union County Board of Commissioners is prioritizing a sewer allocation policy that's going to dictate what percentage of that 1.5 million gallon per day increase each municipality gets. And we're expecting Stallings to receive approximately 100,000 gallons per day of that additional 1.5 million gallon per day increase. And so when that, when that 100,000 is used up, that's, that's it. And there'll be no more capacity for Stallings in the 12-mile creek watershed. And then continued to talk about some, some land use prioritization. Currently, land use is 90-10 in favor of residential, and Union County would like that to be more 80-20. Councilman Richardson touched on our planning and economic development efforts here in the town center, in Union West Business Park, and over by the hospital, to really promote more of that commercial development. And then Union County went through their development review process, because there's a lot of confusion behind that review process, especially with multiple jurisdictions involved. And so they did a really good job putting together a website that really spells out from plan review to construction what that process looks like. And so now we're going to jump into the meat of that meeting with, with Union County. It's really going to open it up for discussion between council to decide where we want to go next, because the, these water reclamation facility flows, wastewater treatment plant flows, really, really tell the story of the issue that, that's at hand here. And this table is from spring of 2024, so let me jump to the next table, that's through January of 2025. So as you can see, and before I jump into this real quick, I want to make a clarification between the actual average daily flows and the actual and permitted obligated flows, because the actual average daily flows is what's currently being contributed and sent to these treatment plants. And the actual and permitted obligated flows is that actual flow plus projects that have been approved, and project plans that have been approved. They're not currently sending flows to these treatment plants, but they have approved construction plans, and it's basically just saying, this is how much extra we have coming down the pipeline. So that percent of permitted flow used is that actual plus the approved construction plans, which gives us those numbers right there. So where there's only 5.305 million gallons per day being sent to 12-mile creek out of their seven and a half capacity, soon to be nine, when you take into consideration the plans that have been approved, that number jumps up to 6.792, 90%. So they do still have capacity, but these plans could come into fruition tomorrow, they could never come into fruition, it's just a little bit of unknown in that regard. But nonetheless, we're running out of capacity and running out of capacity quick, because these red numbers show the increase from spring of 2024 to January of 2025 for each of these treatment facilities. And then the, the big elephant in the room was, we asked Commissioner Merrill if there were any long-term plans to increase capacity in Crooked Creek and 12-mile creek, and long-term being 30-plus years, and the answer was ultimately no. There is no long-term plan to increase the capacity in these watersheds. So that leaves, leaves us for, kind of opens this up for a discussion, because I know we have, we really want to develop this town center area in, over there by the atrium hospital. We don't have any minimum 10-year plans, but definitely from Union County, at least, 30-year plans to increase capacity here. Again, nothing's off the table, we can really pursue any, any and all options, but there will be significant costs associated with, with each option here. And some of these options that we discussed and that we've talked about recently, from connecting to Charlotte Water all the way down to packaged plants and these, this new technology with these, what Aqua just presented, Aquatech just presented as well, these treatment plants. So with that, I know that was a lot of information, a lot, very quickly, but really just wanted to open it up for discussion, answer any questions y'all might have, but we're kind of at that decision point of, you know, where do we want to go from here?
Well, Kevin, thank you for that work on that. That's a lot of information, and I can tell, it's a lot of effort put into it, so thank you for explaining it and breaking it down. You know, the main thing I read out of it is, you know, the options are, one of them's high cost. And, you know, we had our budget meeting tonight, and we all know we're a little strapped for cash. One thing, you know, Max is not here, but he's outside, but anybody that calls here looking to develop, you know, town center around the hospital or wherever, you know, if they're not aware of this new technology, we need to make them aware of it. You know, as I asked them, how much a unit for an 80-room hotel costs, it'd be $200,000. $200,000 is dropping a bucket to Hilton Properties, to put an 80-room hotel beside a hospital, because that's where they want to be. And so we just need, we need to make them aware, we need to get, make sure you and Max are up to speed on everything, who to get in contact with. I'll make sure Kevin has your numbers and your emails, and y'all get to know each other, because, you know, to me, we can't wait eight to 10 years, and we don't have the money to drill a hole underneath 485 to tap into their system at this point. So we'll let the, like we say with roads, we'll let the developer expand our roads and, that's, you know, that's my recommendation, just make them aware that here's an option.
Sure.
So that's my two cents. Counsel, any questions for Kevin? No? All right. Well, thanks for the update there, Kevin.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Everybody's got a copy of this presentation, so if you have any questions, he's always available.
Yeah, please, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Justin, Courtyards at Chestnut Roads.
I'm here as Epcot has formally requested that the town take over the .18 miles of roadway within the Courtyards, Courtyards at Chestnut. As every other neighborhood, they went through our, our street acceptance policy, they've met all our standards, and staff recommends approval, acceptance of those roads.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve acceptance of the roads at Chestnut, Courtyard at Chestnut.
And this is in your district there?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Motion by Brad, thinking about Lori.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, sir, any discussion?
No, no, just, this is the subdivision where we've talked about the median issue.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's all.
Okay, got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, eyes have it. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Karen. I should have moved this up. Do you have David Hill here with you?
Yes, David's here.
I wish I'd have, no, I should have moved y'all up, I'm sorry.
It's okay. All right, let's see. Where am I going to find this at, Erin?
Oh, do you want his presentation?
Uh huh.
The PowerPoint and the
On January the 27th, David Hill from the Piedmont Triad Regional Council presented his findings from the pay and benefit study to the town council and addressed several clarifying questions. He's here again this evening to provide a recap of that study and respond to any follow-up questions.
How can I enlarge that?
How can I make it larger?
Go to the right, to the right, to the right, right there.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you for the opportunity to be with you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be with you again this evening. Good to see you, Alex. Tonight, I will go over the presentation that I have presented in January, obviously here to answer any questions that you may have about the study. So the beginning of the study, taking a look at the purpose of a pay and classification study, is to primarily look at the location, the geographic area, determine a market position for that local government in that local area. And then secondary to that is to look at options, recommendations, strategies to assist with employee recruitment and perhaps more importantly, retention. So just a brief walkthrough of the study, the identification of the market. And in this room, we conducted employee sessions where we met with each employee in groups, talked to them about the study, what the study was, but more importantly, what the study was not. We spent a lot of time in those meetings talking to employees about the completion of a 12-page position description questionnaire. That's 12 pages of employees telling us in great detail every element of their position. And important in that 12 pages, especially for small and medium-sized local governments, when we work with very large local governments, and I'm sure all of you know, the larger the local government, the more specialized most employees become. The smaller the local government, the more hats everybody wears. The position description questionnaire captures all of those, especially for those who wear multiple hats, because in there, we're asking employees not only to tell us in detail all the primary duties, responsibilities, but their secondary. And further break that down into the percentage of time that they spend in each of those activities. And that helps us when we're looking at comparable positions. And when we do those comparisons, it is to comparable positions because there are no two positions in the state of North Carolina exactly alike. So if we can get about an 85% match, especially the primary duties, responsibilities, and authorities, that's about as close to apples to apples as you can get. But while all of that's going on, we're collecting data from those identified market compares and local governments, going through all the preliminary analysis and compilation and running all the different tests that we do on that data, bring before management what our preliminary or initial findings or recommendations are. We continue working with those till we finalize those. And then we end that with presentations. Part of your study also was a benefits review, and I'll talk about that when we get to the very end. What we're going to take a look at now are a couple of bar charts that, take a look at the local government at the beginning of a study, it helps us create a picture of what the local government looks like at the beginning of the study. It helps us create or establish some benchmarks of what your workforce looks like. And I take a look at that with the backdrop of standard deviation, bell curve. So in a mature workforce, and our definition of a mature workforce is you have an average years of employment between eight and 10 years. And I can tell you unfortunately that we probably are going to be adjusting those numbers because year after year that we continue to add historical data to that, unfortunately, the average length of employment in local governments is reducing. But when we take a look at the mature workforce, eight to 10 years of average length of employment, whatever we're measuring, I should be able to find two-thirds of your workforce in the middle, one-third of that standard deviation bell curve. That also is a representation of a salary grade range. The far left would be the minimum or inter-level salary. The middle section would be the midpoint, or what's better known as the market value of a position. The far right would be the maximum salary. So when we, we're going to take a look at then a couple of slides. I cannot recreate, and I told Alex this, I cannot recreate a bell curve. My bell curves, and I often say they look like St. Louis arches, but I'm beginning to doubt myself now that they don't look like St. Louis arches. Make believe that that's a bell curve. So the very first thing I take a look at is, how long have employees been working here? In your case, you've got an average years of employment of a little over five years. And again, our definition of mature workforce is between eight and 10. But when I take a look at yours, and you can see all the bars are on the far left side. You've got 35% of your employees have been with you less than two years. You've got almost 70% of your employees have been with you less than five years. And you can see you're getting over 86% have been with you less than 10 years. So you do have a couple of long-serving employees. Now again, keep in mind that this is data at the very beginning of the study. So this is back at the very beginning of the current fiscal year. This is August data. So I'm taking a look at that, and I'm seeing a very somewhat immature workforce. My bell curve represents a 20-year career. I next take a look at how long have employees been working in their current position. And most of the time, this is a mirror of the first chart. So you've got a lot of employees relatively new, so they've been in a position relatively short period of time. But 58% of your employees have been in their current position less than two years, 86% less than five years. Average length of time in current position, little less than three years. The next slide takes a look at salary distribution. Now, when I first saw these charts, when I first put these charts together, chart number one, average length of employment, chart number two, time and position, chart number three, salary distribution. So my very first or initial interpretation of this chart is salary grade ranges are not market competitive. The town has recognized that, and they're having to bring employees in with salaries further up in the grade range. I typically see this chart as a mirror of the first two charts, where all of the bars, for the most part, would be over on the left side. Employees have not been here long enough for their salaries to have advanced across the salary grade range. But you can see that you've got an excellent distribution of employee salaries. And again, my initial interpretation is that the town recognized that the grade ranges probably were not competitive. They established a program, or at least some protocols, that allowed offers of employment to be at rates greater than the hiring rate or the minimum or that far left side of the bell curve. So your average, your pay grade range is a little less than 48%. So your average salary is 20, 20.5% up the grade range, so almost in the middle part. So your average salary is about in that highest point of the bell curve. So this is an excellent distribution of salaries. So when I get to the recommendations, I'm going to refer back to this because I do not, I never would have intended to make any kind of recommendation to Alex that would negatively affect the salary distribution that you have up there. So then market comparisons. Who are those local governments that are your everyday competitors? So as you look at those lists there, you can see that most of those are your geographic I don't know where your employees live, but a lot of them, if you're like most local governments, a lot of your employees either live in some of those places or they pass right by some of those places on their way here. And one of the reasons that we take a look at this close geographic area is because greater than 90% of local government employees will not move to another part of the state to go to work for another local government. Not that Alex would, but managers do, some department heads do, some technical staff might. But for the most part, greater than 90% of employees will not move to go to work for another local government. Now, will they move or drive in a different direction when they pull out of their driveway tomorrow morning and go to work for one of those places up there? Absolutely. So that's why that group is up there. So what you're looking at now is just the representation. Every one of your positions has a worksheet that looks very similar to this. This is just an example of, in this case, police sergeant. So then I collect data from each of these local governments. I locate those comparable positions, and what I'm doing is collecting what pay grade range do they have that position in? So the very first, the minimum, the midpoint, the max columns are, that's the salary grade range for each, for the sergeant in each of those local governments. The column titled salary is the average salary of sergeants in each of those locations. And then I measure the range. The column titled CR stands for compa ratio, and that'll be part of the recommendations that we'll talk about. Compa ratio is just a relative positioning of salaries to the midpoint of a grade range. And then I measure it differently and measure where our salaries as a percent above minimum. So everything above the blue line is the market. Immediately below the blue line is where you are for this particular position. Sergeant has a grade range of a minimum of 65.7, a max of 97. Average salary is right at $75,000. Immediately below that is the average of the data above the blue line. So the average minimum salary is 71.2. So if you look to the left of that, two cells over, you are 7.7% below market average. And this is measuring the grade range. Then if you look at the median line, you're almost 5% below the median of the market. Moving over to the salary column, again, a police sergeant here, average salary 75,000. Average market is 87.2, median is 88. If you look to the far right, you can see that you're 14% below market. So again, this is just a representation of each of your positions, just a collection of market data, the comparisons, taking a look at different elements of that. So the benefits review, we sent out questionnaires to each of the local governments that participated in the salary study. We received seven responses. But we asked them a number of questions that covered practically every area of benefits. And a 63% response is pretty good when we're asking people to fill out multiple pages of detailed questions about the benefits that they offer. Recommendations from the collection and analysis and the review of all of that data is to assign, and let me go back to sergeant. Currently, sergeant is in grade P20. So police have their own pay plan. My recommendation is to just have one pay plan. There was not a significant difference in the police pay plan and the general employee pay plan. So in here, I'm recommending that in the new pay plan, that police sergeant moves to the new grade 111. And what I'm measuring in the market is the minimum salary that they would begin an employee, the minimum salary of their pay grade range. You have a hiring rate, which is 5% below minimum. And working with Alex and Karen, should we just eliminate the hiring rate? But talking through that, my recommendation is to retain the hiring rate. That's a rate that a brand-new employee would come in. And after the completion, Karen, is that a six-month?
Yes.
At the completion of a six-month probationary period, they automatically move to the minimum salary. So here, a police sergeant, currently in grade P20 with a minimum of 65.7, would move to the new grade 111 with a hiring rate of 66.6, which is a little higher than your current minimum. And then from there, you would jump up to the 5% greater, which would put you up at that almost $70,000 rate, which puts you pretty much back in line with where the market is now. So one of my recommendations, of course, is then to take the data that I developed for each of the positions, the recommendation of the grade assignment, and assign each of those positions to the pay grade range that's supported by the market data. And then back to the compa ratio, we took a look at, again, that slide, the salary distribution. Don't want to do anything to negatively affect where employee salaries are now. So we took a look at length of service, took a look at the time and position. We wanted to work on employee recruitment, employee retention. So the option that I'm recommending is one that provides this compa ratio model, and we'll look at that one next, that assigns a value to time, a value to length of employment, a value to time and position, and assigns that value across the pay grade range. And this is what that compa ratio model looks like. But it's designed that an employee's salary would reach the midpoint. And the midpoint is technically not the correct term for that middle part of the pay grade range. That's the market value, again, where you should be able to find the average salary of that employee who's been in their position eight to 10 years. But this is that value formula that assigns a position along the pay grade range whereby in the eighth year, they reach the midpoint. So if I had that turned over on its side, that mid, the far, the top part would be the far-left side of the bell curve, the eighth year would be that center part of the bell So then putting all of that together, the formula then gives me the spot on the pay grade range where that employee's salary should be in accordance with my recommendations. You do have a number of employees because of that excellent salary distribution table, you do have a number of employees whose salaries would be above where the market or the formula would place it. So those employees who would get an adjustment, salaries portion of that would be 77,000. The 21,000 represents 27%, which is all of those payroll-associated costs, the FICA, the retirement, 401K. Total cost would be 98,411.
So you're saying, back, you're saying for, that's on average, or is that a total cost?
That's an annualized cost. So if you implemented the recommendations and adjusted employee salaries, the 98,411 would be the annual cost of those salary adjustments. And again, 77,000 of that would be the direct salaries line item, the 20,900 would be those FICA retirements and so forth. Now with the benefits review, we also took a look at some of those areas that would enhance your recruitment and retention areas. And what you're seeing here is, the first one is to allow employees to accrue vacation based on prior service. based on prior service. So currently, if I'm working in one of those other local governments, you've got a position available here, and even though I may have been working in one of those other local governments for an extended period of time, if I came to work here, I would have to start off at the very bottom of your accrual for vacation. So number one is just making a recommendation that when you're considering offers to employees who are working in other local governments, to change your current accrual rate and recognize half of theirs. So if I've been working in one of those other local governments ten years, I would come here with a recognized five years of prior service, and I would begin my vacation accruals in your system based on five years, not having to start all over at the base accrual amount. The other area is group life insurance. Currently, you do have that, but it's, the town provides a thirty thousand dollar valued policy for employees. Looking at that benefit from all of those other local governments, my recommendation is that you would provide life insurance of one times an employee's salary up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar max. The other recommendation is regarding working on holidays. Currently, if I have to work on a holiday, I get paid for working the holiday, obviously, but I also receive eight hours for having worked on the holiday. But that's eight hours that gets added to my vacation accrual. So my recommendation is that if employees work on a holiday, in addition to being paid for working on a holiday, that instead of those eight hours just going to the accumulation of my vacation accrual account, that you pay employees eight hours of straight time for having done so. So that was a very quick review of...
That last slide, could you go back?
Yes, sir.
You said if they get paid for working on a holiday, is that straight pay they're getting paid, or do they get holiday pay of one and a half?
Well, working on any particular day is straight time. It's only within the week, or in the case of law enforcement, in the work period.
You're proposing to give them straight pay for eight hours and an additional eight hours of straight pay to basically double their hourly rate?
Yeah, they're still getting the eight hours, but it's going to vacation, which they're going to take off and be paid for. And, and, and Chief, not to put you on the spot, but if an officer is off on vacation, are you bringing in a reserve, or you're covering for that?
Yeah, cover with overtime.
So if you're giving me eight hours of vacation, I'm going to take the eight hours of vacation. Chief's going to have to call somebody in and cover for me while I'm out. They're probably going to get paid overtime for having you to come in and cover for me. This does not add to your salaries expenses.
How did you come up with that last one? Was it, did it square up in some questionnaire, or did you, from the other town?
Yeah, one of the very specific questions we asked was how employees were compensated for working on holidays.
All right, so questions, is that what you, next slide?
Oh, let me get to my last slide. Yes.
All right. Thank you, David.
All right. Just a question for our town manager. We came from a budget meeting this afternoon where we talked about increasing expenses and budgeting for next fiscal year. I have a question about whether the seventy-seven-plus benefit cost, this is probably for Alex, I guess, is that baked into the numbers we are reviewing for FY26 budget, or would this be additional dollars that we haven't quite seen yet?
It is baked in, sir. There would need to be no additional funds added.
And if this is approved, this means that for the balance of this fiscal year, there would be some expenditure, but not that, it would be a prorated amount?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Pulling up my notes here. So we budgeted, the town budgeted fifty thousand dollars for implementation of the pay plan. And for the staff cost to implement it through the end of the fiscal year, I know it's indicate that's approximately twenty-six thousand dollars, can change a little bit based on the cycle of the thing, but approximately twenty-six thousand. And then if the board, I know we haven't gotten to this, but the board chose to implement the pay study for the council, it'd be an additional eighty-five, eighty-five hundred and fifty dollars. And so within the fifty thousand dollars, you could do one or both for implementation within this fiscal year, and it's baked into next year's budget.
Okay. So I'll just make the motion, and then we can discuss. It's, anytime we're dealing with money, we could also punt it to the budget discussions, I'm aware, but knowing that the numbers we're reviewing in Alex's budget includes this adjustment, and if I'm hearing correctly, budgeted for this year's amount, fifty, we'll spend about half of that, a little bit more, I'll make the motion to approve everything on there. I don't want to make the motion to approve council salary adjustments, if that was part of that.
Yeah, we're just looking at A right now.
Are we?
Yeah. Yeah, B is council.
Oh, A, so I'll make the motion to approve A.
Question? Questions for David or Brad?
Go ahead.
Second.
I'll go to you.
Second by Laurie, any further discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, all right. Now, B, are you doing?
Oh, we do have an amended budget ordinance we need to approve.
Yeah, and B?
And we'll pull it up, and it's also in front of you.
Also make a motion to approve amended budget ordinance number eighteen.
Oh.
To transfer funding from contingency to individual departments to pay study implementation effective with the pay period beginning four twelve, two hundred and twenty-five, and account for end-of-year payroll accruals.
Anybody understand that?
Yep.
All right, got a motion by Brad, second by Stephen. Any other questions, discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, all right. Thank you, David. All right, Karen, you got B?
Did that include the paid family leave? I can't remember if that was part of it.
No, that's C.
Okay, got it. I don't have the agenda, I lost it somehow.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There it is, okay.
Counsel, please.
Y'all win?
No.
No. We had a decent? No.
Is the S?
Okay.
Okay, basically, what we had David do is look at salaries at, for mayor, and mayor pro temp, and council. And as you can see, we'll start at the mayor. At the bottom, it's the same thing, we got an average of the fifteen. This is the monthly amount. The median is sixteen, eight. And then Stallings is seventy-eight hundred. And if you look up here, much, much lower than any of the other towns that we looked at. Mayor pro temp, the same thing, average is eleven, six seventy-seven. Then you get the median at nine, and then we're at the forty-eight.
Can I ask, my has two almost identical sections, one of them with different numbers.
Yes, and basically, we did, we did do one including Charlotte, and then we took Charlotte off, okay? Because we felt like this is, this is one, this is the one that's up there. So this is without Charlotte.
All right, that's the second one. I got two. All right.
Also removes Mecklenburg County?
Yep, it does.
And then at the, at the bottom, you will see council with an average of eleven, the median at nine, eight, and then Stallings at forty-eight. And you can see, looking up through there, we're even at the council level, much lower than anybody else.
So Pineville is zero across the board, did they not get paid at all?
I don't think they provided their information. Sometimes it's a little difficult to get...
I think they told me that they don't get paid.
Oh, really? They, they, okay. Okay.
Really?
They do. I have a friend on Pineville Town Council.
Okay.
I don't remember the number, but they do.
Okay. So with the council, to, for twenty-four, twenty-five, it would be eight thousand five fifty to implement, and then fifty thousand eight eighty-five.
What is the recommendation? I didn't see that.
It would be the median, right? Yes.
That would be fifty thousand eight eighty-five?
For the annual, the annual amount.
Sorry, you're suggesting that we would go up to the median amount?
Mm-hmm.
Karen, when was the last time that the council received a paid change?
Well, I've been here for right at twenty-eight years, and I never remember an increase.
Yeah, we got one, the mayor went from four hundred to six hundred.
Okay.
Probably ten years ago, May fifteenth.
Monthly, okay.
I don't remember that.
I don't recall one either, I'm eighteen years, so it might be...
Yeah, yeah, I don't remember, but...
I've been mayor twelve, so it was probably ten years ago.
Okay, okay.
I voted it down, but I couldn't...
I think it's always hard to take this action in a budget year, so I would, can we, can we move this over to our budget discussions in the future months?
I would recommend that.
Yeah, I'm not, did that mess you up at all?
No.
I think that could be part of our budget discussion.
Everybody okay with that?
Okay.
The next budget session is May twelfth, I think, yeah, May twelfth. All right.
Okay.
Thank you on that, Karen.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can do the parental leave.
I'm going to go down the line for the benefits first. For the group life?
Oh, okay, you go back on A.
Approved that.
Yeah, we already approved that.
We're good.
Okay, he did with the life insurance and everything. Okay, all right, perfect, yes.
So you're going to do C, though?
Yes, yes, I'm going to do the parental.
All right, thank you, David.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, you hit the three?
Okay.
Because I changed on...
Hey, I'll make this real easy for you. I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the parental leave policy.
Yeah.
Second.
And the mayor endorses that, so we have a motion and a second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, all right.
There you go.
Yeah, Stephen and I were talking at Stallings for us, I think, or whatever, we couldn't believe it, when we found out units didn't have parental leave, so...
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is Chief, police body cameras.
We don't need, we don't need cameras for bodies.
Not at all. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In 2020, you all approved us entering into two contracts with Axon for body worn cameras and in-car cameras. Well, this year, that contract has come to an end, and in January, we began looking into renewing that contract as we dealt with the vendor. They came back with a new contract that was about fifteen percent higher than what we'd been paying in the past. So staff in the police department tried to renegotiate with Axon vendor, and were able to get that reduced by approximately thirteen percent. So we were able to, from what they initially quoted us for this new contract, we were able to save a little over thirty-five thousand dollars over the life of the next five years, or seven thousand dollars a year. The only caveat was, to get this price, we needed to sign the contract as soon as we could versus waiting until the new fiscal year started. We won't have to pay until the new fiscal year starts, but we just need to sign the contract now to get that, to see that savings. So tonight, I ask you to approve the manager I enter into this new contract with Axon for our body cameras and our in-car cameras, and I'll take any questions you might have.
I've used that same sales technique, Chief, so don't feel bad about it. Any questions?
Yeah, just, how, how many vendors are out there?
To be quite honest with you, there are some, but Axon, they kind of have a corner on the market. They, the body worn cameras, they own Taser, so it's, they're now entering into the report management system field. They're the ones, the, like, all, when we upload body camera and in-car footage, it gets uploaded to the cloud, and then the district attorney's office has an Axon account, so everything gets, automatically just gets shipped to the district attorney, so the prosecutor can look at the video. So if we weren't even contemplating going to another system, that would, I won't say you use the word "complicate," but makes it a little more difficult to get all that footage down to the district attorney, where we'd have to put it on a medium ourselves and hand-deliver versus using it. I think they even use it with, when they're doing discovery with the defense attorneys, they, the district attorney creates an Axon portal for the defense to get in and see the video, so, but there are other vendors out there.
Motion by Brad, second by Laurie, to approve the contract and amended budget ordinance? I don't, there's not, okay, I saw that on here, so, all right, motion to approve the request on the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
All right, Aaron, government use?
Yes, sir. The Union County Board of Election approached us and requested that they use the lobby of this building as a polling day location, again, just stressing, just election day, not early voting, so just on the actual election day. The space would be a three-day, using the space would be a three-day process, their staff would totally do that, our staff would not have to be involved. Day one is set up, day two is election day, day three is teardown, they would also... They would also work with the police staff here at Stallings to make sure voters had access to cross Stallings Road if they needed to park at the park. We would use town hall as much as possible with parking, but overflow would be at the park. Guys authorized the use of this building. The reason they passed is because Stallings United Methodist or Methodist Church is no longer allowing them to use their space, and they need the space in the general.
Do we know why the Methodist church decided no, because?
I don't know why, I just know that the Board of Election employee told me that their council or deacons or, I'm not sure of the body at the church, but the governing body at the church.
Well, we'll definitely have to use the park, parking lot, because Stallings, that polling place was the largest in town.
But they were pleased with the space in the lobby.
Hey.
Move approval.
Would they move all of our furniture and stuff out of there?
We would actually move our furniture before they got here, but then they would bring in all their furniture, they use a moving company, actually would bring in all the things.
But they just want, just the lobby?
Just the lobby.
Wow, that's gonna be tight.
Fair. I mean, yeah, that's a lot smaller than what they typically have.
I'm surprised they didn't want to move it in here, but, okay.
I just have one, more for chief. With people parking across the street and walking across, we've already heard earlier the issues. Is there anything you can do, how to have a police officer out there?
That's what they are asking for, a police officer to assist people across the street, similar to what we do at Stallings.
Are they paying for it?
That they would contract with off duty officers.
Have they?
Be the ones on duty.
Is there rent, is there rent involved in this?
Through the Board of Election. There's no rent, they can, we cannot charge them rent because we are a government.
Move approval.
All right, motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Stephen, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Aaron. All right, council seat terms, all right, Brad?
Yeah, this is maybe just open the discussion, I don't know that we want to take action tonight, but, but a couple meetings ago, someone mentioned that we have a, you probably all know this, and I did too, but it just struck me, we have a election cycle such that five council members are up for election, and then two, which theoretically doesn't quite make sense. In a, in a big election year, controversial election year, which you don't think we typically have, but you could hope, have five sevenths of our board turnover in that year, I think that's also the year, that would be the mayor and four council members are up for election. So I asked the staff, how do we fix that? And I think they said it's a, an action we would take, I don't even know the action, is it charter change, perhaps? So, so the question becomes, how might we do that? And I think it means that one of us has to agree to run for a short term, like a two-year cycle, and have it approved by this board, and then on the ballot, such that then we would have a three and four cycling off. The danger would be, I guess I'm saying, is that in one year, if there is a seat change in our community, we could have five new members sitting here, and that doesn't feel good for continuity, knowledge, past adopted plans, and those types of things. Not that they can't ever be turned over, but it feels like a five to two election cycle is out of balance. So I wanted to bring that up, if anyone wants to suggest they'd like to run for that two-year term, we can talk about that, I'm also willing to do that myself after some discussion, we don't have to vote on that tonight, but I feel like that would be something we ought to talk about. Did I get that right, as far as procedural, with what it takes?
Correct, there's no need for a referendum for it to go on the ballot unless you all want it to, the charter amendment, to make that one seat a two-year term, unless you get 10% of the voters filing a petition saying that they want it to be on the ballot.
Okay.
And the other thing, you know, I talked to Brad a little bit about this, we've done this in the past, we've tried to do it in the past, and nobody volunteered to do the two-year thing, so. Thank you, Brad.
We're all gonna volunteer.
The other thing is, we always, we tried to get it changed, so the four was during the presidential year, so you get larger turnout. Because right now, the five are on, on a non-presidential year, and we want to get the largest turnout as we can, that was the goal, but do one thing at a time. I agree with Brad doing four and three, and appreciate him volunteering doing that, so.
And the only thing that I brought up to Brad is that, that would mean that the south side would be, you know, four, five, and six would be on the one row, and then the north side, one, two, and three would be up there. But, so, yeah, but, but you won't like how I volunteered you. I volunteered you for a six-year term.
We can do that as well, Graham. So, we can laugh, it's just for discussion, if anybody wants to take the two-year, if you're serious, let's talk about it, I'm happy to do it, I don't know there's any.
You and I, it doesn't.
Five could, we're fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, five could undo a lot of sort of good work we've done over the years, so.
It's, it's, it's scary for, at least it's scary for me, that, I mean hypothetically, it could just be me and Laurie here, you know, next year, so.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is scary.
It's scary. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Brad, for bringing that up, so we'll talk about that.
How long does it take, when do we need to decide to do whatever we're gonna do?
So you have to adopt a resolution, there has to be a public hearing, we have to publish notice of the public hearing, then you have to adopt the ordinance, then there has to be public notice of the ordinance adopted. And some of those, there's timeframes between all of those. It can't be adopted later than 60 days after, nor sooner than the next regular council meeting, a couple months, I'd say.
Can I just make the motion that we direct staff to put together a calendar of meeting schedule to adopt the, do the public hearing, adopt the ordinance, so that we at least have a schedule?
Yeah, because the time to do it is this next election, November.
Yeah, that's when the five are up.
Five are up.
Yeah.
You have to register, like, in July.
Something like that, yeah.
Right, July, open up.
Yeah.
All right, we got a motion from Brad, second by Laurie, for, ask staff to develop a timetable for changing the structure of the council. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, eyes have it, thank you. All right, Alex, all committees, budget meeting on May 19th.
Thank you, mayor, we talked about this, so I'll be brief. One, as part of the strategic plan, the board wanted to, wanted to engage the community a bit more, and one of the ways to do that was to have a, a meeting with all the committees as a thank you, and just to let them know about where we stand with the budget, and get any feedback they may have. So the date that's been proposed is May the 19th at 7:00. We'll have a 5:00 budget meeting prior to that, and so that's what is being proposed, sir.
All right, any discussion?
So that's on a, that's not a, that's a?
It's a Monday, 5:00.
It's not a regular.
Third Monday of the month, no meeting.
Oh, it's the third Monday of the month?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, all right, sorry.
The committee meeting would be at 7?
7.
David, you concerned about the additional, one more meeting of the calendar kind of thing?
No, 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 no. I was just taking it all out.
All righty, did somebody make a motion on that? I wouldn't pay attention.
Everybody was looking at their calendar, so they're kind of waiting.
Make a motion to declare national McRoy Day, McElroy Day. Can't even think of the name.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the all committees budget meeting on May 19th? A motion by Mr. Scholl, second by Graham, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. All right, Stephen?
All right.
Vape, smoke shops.
So all I'm asking here for is just to, a request to have the staff do some investigating here. One of the things that was brought up during the discussion with the new, what is it, Idlewild and Stevens Mill Road, was that some of the folks that came here said that they didn't necessarily want vape, vape, smoke shops, dispensary areas over there. And then also, I don't know if anybody's noticed, our new vape shop down here on Monroe Road that is so beautifully painted, it, it looks like total crap. So the, the general thought here was, would be, is that the vape, smoke shops, and dispensaries would become sort of like strip, strip clubs would be in Stallings. It would be something like, you know, a conditional only vote kind of scenario. So, but that's what I'm asking for tonight, is if anybody thinks it is, we would direct staff to, to investigate how to potentially make those restricted uses within the town.
Because Melanie, you know, educate us, I think I've asked this question before, we can't outlaw it.
Correct, there has to be a place somewhere in town for, for them to be located.
I mean.
Carrie Green, I don't know what you said, Brad. I agree with you 100%, so.
So what can we do?
Yeah.
What's the process of where you don't want them to be?
Even in our code, Max? Are they?
Retail otherwise not listed is allowed.
Retail, oh, that's what it's listed on, retail on the list.
It is. I, I know. There is, yeah. But you have to agree, the one down here, it looks pretty nice, doesn't it? Oh.
We could create a new definition.
We already actually, we already planned it.
Okay.
So.
You got it?
So I'll make a motion that we direct staff to bring back action on that item.
I appreciate it. Yeah, go ahead.
Just if we're going to, I mean, do we want to expand it? Cars and then? Those are popping up everywhere, and I, I think especially. To make it clearly.
Are those, are we, are they allowed in North Carolina, the CBD dispensaries?
Yeah.
They're putting them up, it's, it's a, they can be non-psychos. Basically, they can't have the. Basically, you can sell hemp.
Yeah. Ba- basically synthetically you can. It's, it's not the naturally derived THC, is my understanding, but a lot of the chemicals that are synthetic has the same effect as THC are, are very similar, so.
Brad, you know there's one near us, right, near the McDonald's?
And it, and it's a lovely storefront as well, so. From Aaron's point, so I, I mean, I, if we're gonna look into this, maybe we can expand it.
Oh, no, not that one, I meant the one that's next to the UPS store.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the one.
No, the white one, the white building, I mean, that's just, it's gonna fold in.
I hope, prime property, too.
I agree with you, Graham, so expand it as much as you can there.
All right.
We got a motion by Mr. Richardson, seconded by?
I'll second.
Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Done.
Scholl and Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, all right, we'll call this Stallings District S special meeting order.
Yes.
Occupancy, occupancy tax resolution, so. So this is if y'all want to put it on the agenda again in November.
Yes.
Ballot.
On the, about, about, thank you, David.
I make a motion that we adopt this resolution, put it on the, the occupancy tax on the ballot in November.
All right, motion by Mr. Scholl, second by Mr. Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn that?
Second.
Brad and Stephen on the District S. All righty.
All in favor?
Yeah, yeah, get it, all in favor, leave.